How's the members do? You're not in.
Okay, alright.
Okay.
No.
What are the dates? Fifteenth.
We still have a call.
Yeah.
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 If anything, probably that second one.
Okay.
The fifteenth.
Yeah.
The, the family sitting there. Don't even care that we leave the place.
Very nice, okay. And then we'll be the first.
And everything is first.
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
Very excited.
It actually made me cry.
It is. It is. It was all I could hear.
I can't wait to see it all put together. Not that. That matters.
Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Thank you for being here tonight and this rainy weather. We want to thank Ms. Moore for making sure that the rain was not real heavy when we got here tonight.
Right.
That's one of the duties of our city clerk. So at this time, we'll call this meeting to order and ask for the call, the roll call, please.
Mayor Shaw.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Diaz.
Here.
Councilmember Tharp.
Present.
Councilmember Noble.
Here.
Councilmember Dugo and Busque are absent tonight. Mayor, we have a quorum.
Alright, ladies and gentlemen, leading the pledge tonight. We are very pleased to have a fabulous, fabulous young man that will lead us in the pledge named Christian. So please stand for the pledge to the flag.
Here is the microphone. Ready? So there's the flag right here. Let's start. I pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Christian, you did a great job. Thank you very, very much. And he, he found out about this about five minutes ago. So he went through the crisis mode, but he got through it and stuff. But that, it really was good. We do appreciate you doing that. So the first item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. So I'd like to recommend approval of the agenda with just one, with two minor changes. One will be a special presentation. And when we get to the consent agenda, I would like to pull the second item, the proclamation for Mr. Radcliffe. So is there a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Diaz, second by Mr. Tharp. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. That takes us to comments from the public on agenda items only. Is there anybody from the public that would like to speak on agenda items? This is your opportunity on agenda items. Seeing none, we'll move. And we have, our meeting is broken up into two parts tonight. The first one is special business that we need to do, and it's a public hearing on the fiscal year 2026 budget. So at this time, I'd like to call on our city manager for the presentation. We will be dealing with two ordinances related to the 2627 budget. Ms. McHugh.
Good evening.
I'm gonna read the ordinance first. Ordinance 2025-17, first reading, establishing a taxable valuation in levying and ad valorem tax on property located within the corporate limits of Green Acres, Florida, as of the year ending December 31st, 2025, providing for appeal of conflicting ordinances, severability, and an effective date.
Ms. McHugh.
Okay, thank you, Mayor, council. Good evening, everyone. Okay, I think everyone knows the drill. You know, there's some formalities with the adoption of the budget that I have to actually read certain things verbatim to go through. We will be doing a very brief presentation of the budget that will go with our second ordinance, which is ordinance 2025-18. So if you can bear with me, most of what I'll be reading will go with the first ordinance, and then adoption of the first ordinance, and then the second ordinance with the brief presentation. Per Florida statutes, section 200.065, it outlines the procedural steps that must be followed by each unit of local government in the preparation and approval of the governmental entities' property tax, millage, levy, and annual budget. In accordance with these regulations, the certified taxable property values as of July 1, 2025, provided by the Palm Beach County Property Appraiser, will be used to determine the ad valorem tax proceeds in the calculation of the fiscal year 2025-2026 budget. Taxing authorities must hold two public hearings to adopt a millage rate and budget. This evening's hearing is the first public hearing of the City of Green Acres to adopt a tentative millage rate and a budget for fiscal year 2025-26. The tentative millage rate and the budget must be adopted in separate votes pursuant to the direction provided by the city council. At the budget meetings held on June 16th and July 21st, staff has prepared two ordinances required by the truth and millage trim process for approval by the city council. The ordinance to establish the taxable value and set the ad valorem rate, which is ordinance 2025-17, must be passed first, followed by the ordinance to adopt the budget, which is ordinance 2025-18. This first ordinance, 2025-17, establishes the taxable value and sets the ad valorem rate. The certified total taxable value of $3,382,129,026 provided by the property appraiser's office is $240,847,423 more than last year's certified taxable value of $3,141,281,603. The 7.67 increase in taxable value is due to an increase in property values along with an increase in new construction. The millage rate of 6.3000 mils applicable to the general fund levy for fiscal year 2026 is 7.43% greater than the calculated rollback millage rate pursuant to section 200.065-1 Florida statutes of 5.8641 mils that generates the same amount of property tax revenue as last year on existing real and personal property. The property tax rate of 6.3000 mils set by ordinance 2025-17 would generate $20,455,116 of ad valorem revenue or $1,530,146 more than the fiscal year 2025. The proposed ordinance is set the total millage at 6.300 mils and appropriates $81,792,071 for the operation of the city's fiscal year 2026 budget. The first budget hearing was advertised in the preliminary tax assessment notices as required by Florida statutes 200.065. The second hearing is set, to set the millage rate and adopt the final budget, is scheduled for September 17, 2025, at 6:00 PM at the Green Acres City Hall, and was advertised in a newspaper that has local circulation in the city. Staff is recommending approval of ordinance 2025-17 on first reading.
Thank you very much. This is a public hearing, so at this time, I would like to ask if anybody wishes to speak in favor of this ordinance? Now is the time for you. Anybody wishing to speak in favor of this ordinance? Seeing none, anybody wishing to speak in opposition to this ordinance? Seeing none, we'll go to the council for any questions or comments. Seeing none, entertain a motion on this item.
Motion to approve ordinance 2025-17 on first reading.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Diaz, second by Mr. Tharp. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Second item is ordinance 2025-18. Ms. McHugh.
Ordinance 2025-18, first reading, adopting an operating budget for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2025 and ending September 30 of 2026, providing for appeal of conflicting ordinances, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date.
Alright. Thank you again. This one will be a lot shorter, and then we'll go into our brief presentation. So this second ordinance, 2025-18, adopts an operating budget for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2025 and ending September 30, 2026. The proposed budget appropriates revenues and expenditures from $58,337,694 in fiscal year '25 to $81,792,071 in fiscal year '26. So we'll go ahead and go into our brief presentation. A lot of this information you already did go over, but we, we did go over in prior meetings, but we'll go over again this evening. The first slide that you'll see here, really, this just shows the operating millage rates going back to 2024. We have to show what the fiscal year '26 operating millage rate or what the numbers look like based on a 6.3000 millage versus the rollback rate of 5.8641. So again, as I said, I read into the record earlier with the setting of the millage. At a 6.300 millage, we're looking at property tax revenue of $20,455,116. One thing that I do want to note, you'll see that the difference between the prior year and 2026 is $1,456,000, excuse me, 654. In the summary, you will see that the difference in the revenue is listed at $1,530,146. That variance or that difference is because we are still paying the county the ad valorem for the annexation of the plaza at Lake Worth Road and Jog Road. So we have to pay the MSTU for a certain period of time, until I believe it's a four-year, five-year period. Once we're done, I think we're going into the third year. Once we're done with that, then we will be able to realize that full number. But as of right now, that difference shows the money that we're paying back to the county for the MSTU for those property, that property, or those parcels there. And then you will see then the 2026 rollback, again, at the 5.8641. We're showing a net change of the negative 7.43%. That would take the property tax revenue to $18,998,360, and that pretty much makes it a wash. Based on the adoption of the 6.3000 mils, we're looking at the line item above there. So that's what that slide is showing. Okay, next slide. Our next slide really is just showing the same information in a different format. One thing, just wanted to note that you'll see the budgeted purposes, the ad valorem revenue for budgeting purposes. We budget at 96%. We do not budget at the full 100%, knowing that some will not be collected. We can't go below 90, 95% collection rate. So we are budgeting right now at a 96% collection rate for ad valorem. Next slide. That just shows where our millage has been. Based on the reduction of the millage in 2023, it has stayed the same since 2023. Okay, 2026 budget, here we are. So briefly, we did speak about this at our meeting in July, but just want to go over a little bit again. Fiscal year 2025, we're looking to end the year pretty good at 1.7 million to the good. A lot of the monies that you're seeing that we're transferring from the general fund have really been just from our conservative operations through the years, and we've allowed that to build up a little bit because we've been holding on to those funds for some big projects that we have going. But based on fiscal year '25, and this is forecasting as of July the 2nd, so we still do have a little bit of time, but we're running really well at the 1.7 million. We're showing that state revenue sharing is actually coming in higher than the estimate that was provided. So we've been pleased with that. And actually, we've received more ad valorem than expected. We usually get everything by April, but we have received some additional ad valorem. So that has helped with the numbers going into the closeout of fiscal year '25. In looking at fiscal year '26, I'm just gonna point out a couple of things. You'll see that the interest income reduces. Really, that's because we're projecting a lower number because we're gonna be drawing down the fund balance. So we are going to be investing less dollars. So that's why we're projecting less of interest income. But for fiscal year '23, we were at $1.3 million in interest income. So, but just because the numbers are less that we have available, that's why we're projecting a little bit lower number there. When you see the PBSO contract, you do see an increase or a percent change of 2.7 under the expenditures. It's technically 3%, but because our contract year begins February the 1st, we have four years of the prior year rate and then the new year rate. But technically, the increase is a 3% increase. And then the other item that I wanted to note, the inter-fund transfers, the 10.6 million. And that's why you're seeing a negative 8.5 million. And again, we do have to have a balanced budget that we're presenting to you for adoption. But we're showing the variance as of right now. The reason you're seeing the 8.5 million there is because those are funds that we're transferring from the general fund to cover the costs for the EOC. We are doing phased budgeting for the EOC, so we're moving those dollars in phases. But that's what takes that number there. So that 10.650 is the covering of the 304 fund, which we know we normally don't have enough revenue coming into the 304 fund, which is our reconstruction and maintenance. We don't have enough money coming in there that we always have to do a transfer for that. It also is covering some of youth programs, and then it covers the cost of the general fund dollars going towards the EOC. And then the last item I just wanted to point out was other obligations, the 494-200. That is the Chapter 175, 185 pension trust obligation that the city is required to have. So that is for the police and fire pensions. So that is it for that slide. Our next slide, again, is showing the budget. It's showing our revenues. So when you look at the general fund, we're looking at total estimated revenues and financing sources of $58,517,163. Just to note, we have not received all of the state revenue estimates yet, but we had to keep moving without them. So we project it as best we can. We, those numbers potentially could change, which they will cause for adjustments later on. But we went with, just based on the historical numbers that we've had. So we're at the $58,517,163. Our special revenues are at 1.5 million. And again, our biggest expenses are our capital projects, primarily the 304 fund. That's at $21,744,900. That gives us a total budget of $81,792,071. And then when you go to the next slide, which is showing the expenses, again, it's pretty much everything that I showed on that, that slide prior to the revenues that we just had. It's just showing a little bit of a breakdown where we have our general fund of the 58 million. Again, we're, we're breaking it down into categories, how our general fund is expended, our special revenues, capital projects based on the different funds of the 21 million. So we are presenting a balanced budget this evening of $81,792,071. And our last slide, if you have your binoculars with you or your magnifying glass with you, that is just showing our capital projects and what, what funds we're allocating for capital projects. But you know that we do have all the backup for you available for that. And if there's any matrices that you need to see based on what those projects are, primarily the 304 fund, there's a lot of matrices, like with overlays and roadway resurfacing, things like that. We do have all of that calendared out over a five-year period. We want to make sure we're capturing that. Same thing with fire rescue equipment. That was something, again, that was previously not captured in the budget. So we now capture those dollars so that we can allocate for them and look out for future years. So the only other thing I have is our second budget meeting is September 17, 2025. There is, prior to your consideration of a public hearing and, and voting by the council, a couple of things I just wanted to note, and I think it's important to note because I do think that it's something that is going to continue to come up. Over the next few months, I think you're going to be hearing a lot about it. We've heard a lot of conversation about property taxes and the potential elimination of property taxes at the state and what that would mean for us and what that looks like. So when you look at the slide, the second to last slide, so it would be the expenditures, the expense budget. So when you look at the slide, we talked about how much revenue we bring in from ad valorem. Ad valorem is really kind of the guarantee from taxes. Everything else, those numbers fluctuate. We don't know those, you know, we, we calculate them differently, but we know taxes are the one number. So we're looking at 20.455 million. And when you look at our expenditures, public safety alone is $28 million. So we do not bring in enough ad valorem just to cover our public safety costs. So it is something that is going to be a very important conversation at the state level, and it's something that we're asking everyone to be well-educated on. Nobody, you know, we don't want to pay property taxes. You're not necessarily paying, you know, the, the, the comments are made at times that, "Well, I don't technically own my home because I have to pay property taxes." You're paying for a level of service that we're providing. We're providing police, we're providing fire, we're providing events, we're, we're providing different services that, that, you know, we're providing roads and, and all of those different amenities. So it's important to be able to understand all of those things as that conversation continues. The last thing that I just wanted to bring to your attention, to talk a little bit about the proportionate of $1 and how that $1 is broken out and what our residents pay of that $1 in municipal taxes. So in looking at $1, 32.95 cents of that $1 is paid toward, to the City of Green Acres. 26.67 cents of that $1 is paid to Palm Beach County. 33.03 cents of that $1 is paid to the school district. And 7.35 cents of that $1 is paid to special districts. So that, all of the taxes that are being paid are not coming to Palm Beach County. Only 32.95 cents of the, every $1 paid is coming to the City of Green Acres. So I just wanted to point that out, and we'll provide that information to you. We are going to be providing additional information to the residents to ensure that they know how their dollars are spent and, and that we are good stewards of their dollars. So, you know, we, we operate very conservatively as a city. I think we do a really good job of, of spending our taxpayers' dollars wisely. And we will be sure that in the next coming months that we, we provide that information to our residents. So that's all I have for ordinance 2025-18.
Thank you very much. This is also a public hearing, so at this time, Mr. Noble after public hearing. I'd like to open the floor to the public. Anybody wishing to speak in favor of this ordinance? Anybody wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing none, we'll move. Questions from council, Mr. Noble?
Yes, to bring it down to individuals, the taxes I'm paying more to Green Acres is $17 more than I paid last year. The other thing I want to point out, if they look closely at their tax notice, they will see that they're paying more for school taxes, substantially more for school taxes than they're paying for Green Acres. And in many cases, people are seniors and they have no one in school. So our dollars are really working well for, for our citizens.
Ms. Diaz.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you so much, City Manager McHugh. You have always presented this in such a clear way for us. I do have two questions with regards under the Revenue and Expenditure Summary General Fund. Fines and forfeitures, it looks like a 390% change, and miscellaneous income looks like an 800% change. Can, can you shed a little bit of light on why those are so different?
Fines and forfeitures and miscellaneous income. Can I get that information to you before the next meeting? We'll get that for you before the next meeting.
Thank you. I just want to know what kind of falls in those categories so we know moving ahead.
You have that?
If it's...
You can go ahead. Okay. The fines and forfeitures, we did allocate some funds for the school speed zone cameras. So we allocated revenue, and interestingly enough, the number that they gave us for fines and forfeitures, they gave us a much higher number. We're gonna be conservative on what that revenue is, understanding that they're going to have to get approvals from Palm Beach County and FDOT to put the cameras on those school zones. So we figured it might take a little while. We know that other municipalities are up and running. Most of those other municipalities, it's the local roads, so they've been able to get them on faster. But that's what that is. We took a, a percentage of what we thought. We figured that they probably won't get started until sometime after the new year, but it is a pretty large number still. They were giving us a number in the millions. We did not budget for a number in the millions. We were pretty conservative, but that's what the fines and forfeitures number is. That's what that big number is.
Miscellaneous income. It can be before the next one, it's fine.
Okay, they're IT-related, they're IT-related lease agreements. So that's what that is. Yeah. For the miscellaneous.
Thank you.
Yep.
No other questions? Just a quick comment. You know, when, when we have our meetings and we have these public discussions and presentations by staff, and then tonight, seeing our firefighters that are here, I think our public should be so pleased with what this city can accomplish with the limited resources that we have. And there's not a single one of us sitting up here that could do this if we weren't working as a team together to make these decisions. And part of that team are all of the people who work. Every time I hear those sirens go out close to me, I know that somebody's receiving service from our city, and maybe somebody's life just got saved. And all of this, when it comes to this time of year, when we have to make those decisions of how we're gonna use your money and how we're gonna make it go where it needs to go, is a time that I think that it's certainly, from my perspective, and I think from the council, that we realize just how important it is that we have great leadership in this city, and the work that they do is something that's terribly well-appreciated. So thank you very much. So. With that, I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance 2025, or, -18.
Motion to approve ordinance 2025-18, first reading.
Motion by Mr. Tharp, second by Mr. Noble. Motion by Mr. Tharp, second by Mr. Noble. Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Emanmously? So, we now go to special business, but before we do that, we have a treat for everybody. Uh, the city has been going through for the last several months, uh, if not longer, a rebranding of the city. Next year is our two hundred and fifi, our two-hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary. I'm a little off on that one, hundredth anniversary. And we'll be, uh, we'll be getting all of the new branding things out for the hundredth anniversary, the new branding of the city. But tonight, I have an Academy Award-winning video that's been done by the staff. It's only about a minute or so long, but this shows a little bit of where we have been, where we're going, and also first look at the branding of our city. So please enjoy the next one minute. Thank you, and that's the first look at our, our new logo. So our special business tonight, we have three proclamations. Ms. Diaz will be doing the first two and Mr. Tharp will be doing the third one. So at this time, we'll do our special presentations.
Thank you, Mayor. So I am honored tonight to be presenting two proclamations. The first, near indeed to my, dear to my heart, is proclaiming September fifteenth through October fifteenth, National Hispanic Heritage Month. The theme for twenty-twenty-five is collective heritage. Honoring the past, inspiring the future reflects, this reflects the enduring legacy of resilience, leadership and cultural vibrancy that Hispanic communities bring to every facet of our society. From America's earliest days, Hispanic Americans have played a prominent and important role in our national heritage. Hispanic Americans lift up our communities and our economy as entrepreneurs, executives and small business owners and make contributions in the areas of science, art, music, politics, academia, government and sports. Hispanic American-owned small businesses are the fastest-growing businesses in America at a pace fifteen times the national average over the last decade, with more than three million Hispanic Americans. Therefore, we, the mayor and city council of the city of Green Acres, do hereby proclaim September fifteenth through October fifteenth as National Hispanic Heritage Month in the city of Green Acres and urge all citizens to honor the achievements and contributions made by all Hispanic Americans to our great country. I am honored tonight to welcome Carlos Poveda, Dr. Dr. Leon Poveda, Jessica Poveda of Grace Family Medical Medicine, Catalina Restrepo, David Olaya and Angela Amesquita of Restrepo Law Group. Are you here? Come on up.
Um, good afternoon, everyone. My name is Catalina Restrepo. I am the owner and founder of Restrepo Law Group, um, a small law firm here in the city of Green Acres, actually just up the street. Um, as an immigrant myself and being part of this community, um, I am without words um, of this wonderful gesture and I want to thank you, um, and I want to thank the community for, you know, showing up. This is great. Um, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Just want to thank the council members for this great honor and privilege. Dr. Harris for extending this invitation. I've gotten to know him the last couple of months and it's been a pleasure and it's amazing to see what work all of you are doing in Green Acres to support the business community. Uh, we're a family-owned, independent, family medical, medical practice and, here. And so, we are truly family-owned, right? We have my wife and my father who practice. My background is in do, doing like the background stuff. But uh, our business was in Wellington and we decided to strategically move it to Green Acres. Um, and I think it's been a great fit. We're wrapping up our one-year anniversary being in Green Acres. And it's a special moment because my wife grew up here in Green Acres. She graduated from John I. Leonard. So it's like a special, special moment for her. So I'd like to just, you know, say a couple of words of what this means for all of us as a family.
Thank you, thank you, City of Green Acres and Mayor and all the council members. Um, for me, it's a full-circle moment, so I did grow up here in Green Acres and um, now having a business here and being able to provide service to all the members in the community is just something that is near and dear to my heart, especially during Hispanic Heritage Month, being here and taking this, you know, beautiful proclamation back to our office means so much. Um, our culture, uh, obviously we're, we're all, my parents are first generation. I'm first generation, my parents are Cuban and um, my family here is from Nicaragua. So providing, you know, care to our um, culture and just being able to, you know, give that service and that family and those values means so much to us, especially here in this community. So we're just really grateful to be able to provide care and to everybody here, so thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you all so much. The next proclamation we have this evening is a proclamation from the city of Green Acres proclaiming September twenty-twenty-five as Lighted Up Green for Muscular Dystrophy Month. Muscular dystrophy is not a single disease or disorder that affects everyone the same way, but an umbrella term covering more than fifty-two different types of muscular and neuromuscular diseases ranging in severity. All muscular dystrophies result in progressive muscle weakness, from mild muscle weakness to complete paralysis of all voluntary muscles, including those used for breathing and/or swallowing. More than one million individuals in the U.S. are affected by one of, of the different types of muscular disorders. Muscular dystrophy awareness, Lighted Up Green for Muscular Dystrophy Month is a special opportunity to educate the public about muscular dystrophy and issues in the muscular dystrophy community. Therefore, we, the mayor and the city council of the city of Green Acres, do hereby proclaim September twenty-twenty-five as Lighted Up Green for Muscular Dystrophy Month in the city of Green Acres, Florida, and ask all citizens to be aware of this debilitating disease and to participate by lighting it up green in September twenty-twenty-five. If Ms. Nadine Kirby is here this evening? Would you like to say a few words?
Um, uh, yeah. Um, I just want to thank everybody for being out in this weather, so it's so lovely out there. Um, thank you all, everybody for being here. Not just for me, but for everybody, you know. Um, anyway, um, this proclamation really means a lot. I've been working on this for um, probably the last ten years of my life. Um, my son David wasn't able to be here today. Um, David was um, diagnosed when he was three and a half years old. And um, he is now going to be thirty-two with Duchenne muscular dystrophy and that's just one of the muscular dystrophies. Um, so I started Lighted Up Green for Muscular Dystrophy to represent all the muscular dystrophies, not just one, because there are so many of our children and young adults and grown adults that have different forms of muscular dystrophy. Um, so I just really wanted to say thank you and thanks, everybody, for being here. Really appreciate it. Thank you.
If you'll say for a picture, while we're getting ready for the picture, I just want to thank those firefighters that were out there this weekend with the filling of the boot. Thank you guys so much for doing that.
Actually, yeah. That too, to all you guys. Thank you so much for being out there collecting. It really means a lot. The families with muscular dystrophy appreciate you guys a whole lot more than you could even possibly know. So thank you, really.
All right, good evening. Uh, tonight I'm honored to present the proclamation of the city of Green Acres, Florida, proclaiming September twenty-twenty-five as firefighter appreciation month. Uh, fighting fires is one of the most hazardous professions, requiring physical strength, extensive training, courage, endurance and a selfless concern for the welfare of our citizens. In addition to their daily service to our communities, firefighters throughout the state and across the nation have joined the Muscular Dystrophy Association since nineteen fifty-four in the fight against neuromuscular disease. The funds collected by the Green Acres firefighters assist the Muscular Dystrophy Association in providing medical services at local clinics, summer camp, research grants, support groups and public education seminars at no cost to local children and families. Therefore, we, the mayor and the city council of the city of Green Acres, do hereby, uh, excuse me, do hereby proclaim September twenty-one, twenty-five as firefighter appreciation month in the city of Green Acres, Florida, and thank you, all the firefighters of Green Acres Fire Rescue, for their efforts on behalf of the Muscular Dystrophy Association. Chief, crew, please come on up.
Going to make chief say something?
He's got to put me on the spot real quick here. Good evening, Mayor Shaw, city council, city manager, Ms. McHugh. It's a privilege and an honor to stand in front of you to accept the firefighter appreciation proclamation. Uh, whenever the department receives a proclamation or an award, uh, it's not about one person. It's about the department. Day in and day out, these firefighters put their, their lives on their line for you and they want to make the city better and the department better. So this, this is not for me. This is for the, the ladies and gentlemen of the department and thank you for this honor.
Good work. Congratulations. Thank you for, thank you for everything.
Absolutely, looking forward to it, looking forward to it.
Now let's get to work. So, our next item is our consent agenda. We have two items. We, I've pulled one. Um, so is there a motion to approve item number six on the consent agenda?
So moved?
Motion by Ms. Diaz, second by Mr. Tharp. All in favor? All opposed? The second item, uh, Richard Radcliffe, who was just retired recently as, um, as executive, executive director of the Palm Beach County League of Cities, served many years as a city council member here in Green Acres. I had the pleasure when I very, the very first time I came on the council, uh, Richard and I served together and I've known him for the last thirty-some years. And Richard did a wonderful job supporting this city. This city grew a lot during the time that he was on the council and then he made the decision to go to work with the League of Cities. He absolutely refused to come to the meeting tonight to receive the proclamation and part of it was because I think he's getting a proclamation from all thirty-seven cities in the county and he didn't want to show any favoritism. We think he still should have shown some favoritism to us, but we can live with that. But the proclamation that we have tonight will be sent to Mr. Radcliffe in appreciation. So anybody else, Mr. Noble?
Yes, I have to say something about Richard. Uh, he's the man that's responsible for my being here in the council. Uh, I was helping him with his campaign and he, uh, he knew that I was very much involved in politics and he suggested I come on board. And uh, uh, and so I did and I've been here all these years, thanks to him. He's a wonderful guy. He did a lot of, uh, lots for the city while he was here, uh, as, as Mr. Shaw has pointed out. And then he moved on to the other areas and uh, uh, he's still a young man and, and uh, we appreciate what he's done, thank you.
So, Mr. Tharp?
Uh, just to share a brief story, uh, Mr. Radcliffe is also the reason I, I am sitting here. Um, back, back when I first moved into the city, I, I had a complaint. Um, and he challenged me. He said, instead of complaining, why don't you get up and do something about it? Uh, so I, I volunteered on the board and, uh, many years later and a lot of gray hairs later, um, I, I have him to thank. So just nothing but fond memories from Mr. Radcliffe.
With that, I'll entertain a motion to approve this. Oh, Ms. Diaz, sorry about that.
Thank you very much. Um, well, he's not responsible for me sitting here, but he is responsible for helping me understand the importance of local voices making local choices, the importance of home rule. And he really does leave behind a strong legacy of collaboration, commitment to strengthening our communities and the work that he did across all of Palm Beach County for all of our municipalities. He lives, leaves some big shoes to fill. Phil, I wish he was here today so I could thank him in person, but we're all going to be thankful to Mr. Radcliffe for years to come. Thank you.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve this item.
So moved?
Motion by Ms. Diaz, second. Second by Mr. Noble. Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Let's take us to our regular agenda. The first item is ordinance, um, twenty twenty-five dash three, four. Madam Clerk?
Resolution twenty twenty-five dash three, four. Complying with Senate Bill seven eight four, which amend section one seven seven point zero seven one Florida statutes by requiring all Plats and RePlats to be administratively approved and requiring all municipalities to designate an administrative official to administratively approve, approve of conditions or deny Plats and RePlats on or after July first, twenty twenty-five, providing for appeal of conflicting resolutions and providing for an effective date.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, so as mentioned, during the recent twenty twenty-five session, the Florida legislature did update the requirements for processing a plat where they can no longer go to the local governing bodies. They do have to be administratively approved. So this resolution essentially does just that, so that we can continue to comply with this Florida state statute. Um, essentially, that, that is the only change, is that the plat would now be administratively approved. approved and reviewed versus going to city council, but all of the other components of the project with the site and development plan and the master sign plan would still come before the planning and zoning board and ultimately the city council for approval. The plat is really just a technical document that solidifies the site plan that you all would approve. But otherwise, this has been reviewed for legal sufficiency, and staff does recommend approval, and I'm free for any questions after the public hearing.
All right, thank you. This resolution is a public hearing, so it's time for the public. Anybody from the public wishing to speak in favor of this resolution? Anybody wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing none, questions from council? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve Resolution 2025-34?
Motion to approve Resolution 2025-34.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Diaz, second by Mr. Noble. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries unanimously. The next one is a public hearing on ordinance 2025-15.
Ordinance 2025-15, first reading, amending Chapter 16, Article 3, District Regulations, Division 13, study area zone, to clarify the application and to allow for limited minor improvements, providing for appeal of conflicting ordinances, providing for severability, providing for inclusion in code, and providing for an effective date.
Thank you, Mayor. So this one is a city-initiated zoning text amendment to Chapter 16, Article 3, Division 13, which is our study area zone. The study area zone, it's essentially the temporary holding zone, sorry, for properties that have been annexed or if they're undergoing long-range planning considerations. So, for instance, I know we're looking at expanding down on Haverhill towards Lantana. Some of those properties may entail where there are, you know, in this pattern of us actually looking at what the long-range zoning and future land use for the property is. So currently, the study area zone, it prohibits all development from happening until a rezoning, and our code pretty much entails anything that you have to pull a permit for is essentially development. So this amendment would allow the study area zone, the properties in them, to do limited minor improvements, such as if they want to augment and enhance their landscaping, replace fencing that may be falling down or dilapidated, or other measures necessary to ensure public safety, welfare, or to fix a code compliance situation. We would allow those, and then also if there is a valid development approval for, from Palm Beach County, for instance, we would also honor those, that they can continue to build out the valid approval, or separately, if there's a form of annexation agreement that the city council approves, they can still continue with those. Really, those are the changes here, and we still want to keep that temporary intent of the study area zone, really just for that consideration of the annexed properties and our long-range planning considerations. So otherwise, this one has been reviewed by DRC. They recommended approval. It's been reviewed by legal, and staff does recommend approval. And I'm available for any questions following the public hearing.
This is also a public hearing, so this time we'll open this meeting to the public. Anybody from the public wishing to speak in favor? Anybody wishing to speak in opposition? We'll close that part of the meeting and go to council questions. Ms. Diaz?
Thank you so much. If I'm understanding correctly, then this kind of creates a space for, while it's still in that transitional area from being annexed to being actually approved under a certain zone?
Correct. So, for instance, sometimes we, one of those properties, they have a current approval from Palm Beach County, and one of the uses, it's already been approved by Palm Beach County, they have that valid approval, but it's not a use that's mentioned in our code. So we would still like to have that property come in. They have the approvals of what they have been approved to do and build out as such, but still for us to work out how that impacts our zoning ordinance before we change that.
And I think I heard you say that this still does allow us also to cite if there's any code issues or safety issues.
Correct. And then that was one of the issues where if you had to pull an, if you had to pull a permit to correct one of those code issues, we were almost saying that you couldn't before because we prohibited all development.
Thank you.
Seeing no other questions, entertain a motion.
I'd like to move approval of ordinance 2025-15 on first reading.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Diaz, second by Mr. Tharp. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries unanimously. Our next item is public hearing, hearing on ordinance 2025-20. Madam Clerk?
Ordinance 2025-20, first reading, amending Chapter 13, taxation, Article 5, additional homestead exemption for persons 65 and older, Section 13-85 exemption, to increase the homestead exemption for qualifying persons 65 years of age and older, providing for severability, conflicts, codification, delivery of the ordinance, and an effective date.
All right, Ms. McHugh?
I think city attorney.
I think that's me. Although, if I need to defer to Ms. McHugh, I'm sure she's more than capable of answering any questions, but I will definitely get the ball rolling. In 2022, Green Acres adopted ordinance number 202227, and that provided pursuant to state statute and the state constitution, the ability to provide an additional homestead exemption to persons who were over the age of 65 and of qualified income. At the time, back in 2022, the council approved this additional homestead exemption at $5,000 per year for qualifying individuals. At its regular meeting on August 4th of 2025, the city council discussed increasing the annual exemption and directed staff to come back with an ordinance effectuating such an increase. Proposed ordinance 2025-20 does go ahead and increase that annual amount from $5,000 to $25,000 per year for qualifying persons. Based on the discussion that was had previously, this is not expected to impact any services provided from the city, and staff's recommendation is approval on first reading.
This is also a public hearing, so I'll open this part of the meeting to the public. Anybody wishing to speak in favor of this item? Anybody wishing to speak in opposition? Council, any questions? If not, we'll entertain a motion on this ordinance.
I would love to move, oh my gosh, approval of ordinance 2025-20 on first reading.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Diaz, second by Mr. Tharp. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries unanimously. Our next two ordinances are in first reading, so these are not pub, public hearings. So the first one is ordinance 2025-16. Madam Clerk?
Ordinance 2025-16, first reading, amending the City of Green Acres budget for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2024, and ending September 30 of 2025, inclusive of providing for repeal of conflicting ordinances, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date.
Ms. Berriger?
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Terry Berriger, Finance Director. Ordinance 2025-16 is a budget adjustment. Council Policy Number 6 requires the city council action to authorize budget adjustments between cost centers, departments, and funds. This budget adjustment deals with two funds, the 105 Youth Program and 303 Parks and Recreation. The Youth Program Fund requires an inter-fund transfer from general in the amount of $86,000, $87,000. This is to cover some of the forecasted negative fund balance. Revenues and other grants did not kick in yet, and we're still waiting for the new building. There's other circumstances that just didn't happen this year. With the fund transfer of $87,000, the ending fund balance for 2025 is estimated to be $5,000, about $58,092. The other one, the Fund 303 Parks and Recs, we spoke about at the CIP meetings. This fund is requiring about $400,000 transfer. This is due to the fact that some of our impact fees did not come in. And again, the impact fees are at the moment of CO now, so they did not come in as expected in a timely manner, well, the time that we expected them. So the forecast, with the fund balance transfer, the ending fund balance is expected for 2025 to be $38,156. So the total budget adjustment in the 105, in 105 and 303 is expected to be, is $487,000. Staff recommends approval of ordinance 2025-16 on first reading.
All right, council, any questions? Ms. Berriger, just for the public's information, this is, this is not new money. This is just transferring money from one account to another.
Transferring from the general.
This is already budgeted money. All right.
Yes, it was in the general fund, is that what you said?
All right, we'll entertain a motion on this item.
Motion to approve ordinance 2025-16 on first reading.
Motion by Mr. Tharp, second by Mr. Noble. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries unanimously. Our next item is also a first reading on ordinance 2025-19. Madam Clerk?
Ordinance 2025-19, first reading, authorizing an amended lease agreement for a portion of Veterans Memorial Park pursuant to Article 6, Section 1G of the city's charter, which requires leases of city-owned property to be approved by ordinance, providing for severability, conflicts, and an effective date.
Mayor, good evening. This is my item also. So, as you may be aware, the city charter requires any leases of city property to be approved by ordinance, so this is why we're bringing it, bringing this matter to the council in this format. In 2020, excuse me, in 2004, the city leased a portion of Veterans Memorial Park to Sprint, which later assigned that lease to SBA Steel, to LLC, in order to construct cellular communications tower and related equipment. That lease agreement has subsequently been amended, most recently in 2023, when an easement was granted for the installation of fiber optic cable. The proposed ordinance 2025-19 authorizes a third amendment to the lease agreement. The purpose of the third amendment is to state with greater particularity the boundaries of the leased area and to expand the leased area by 200 feet. The additional 200 square feet would allow for the installation of an emergency generator and related accessories. The tenant's currently monthly rate is, currently monthly rental rate is $5,332, and for the additional square feet, they, the parties have agreed upon an additional $150 per month for those additional 200 square feet. Based on the remaining life of the lease, that calculates out to just over $7,000 additional for the city. And just so that, just to clarify, there was some discussion about whether or not that additional 200 square feet was included in a regular, in a prior amendment to the lease agreement, and so the parties compromised on the $150. It's lower than we might normally ask for, but this was a negotiated resolution. And staff's recommendation is to approve ordinance 2025-19 on first reading, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have about that.
Are there any questions from the council on this one? Seeing none, entertain a motion.
Motion to approve ordinance 2025-19 on first reading.
Motion by Mr. Tharp, second by Mr. Noble. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries unanimously. That concludes our regular agenda. We have the timeliness on this for our next item is Charter Review Committee. Ms. McHugh?
Thank you very much, Mayor, Council. Thank you very much, Mayor, Council. Just looking for some guidance, was having some discussion with our city clerk regarding our Charter Review Committee, and as, just as a reminder, we do have nine members. It is a nine-member board made up of six city council-appointed members, one 2928 IAFF representative, and one local business owner. As you know, the committee has not met in some time. The reason we're looking for some guidance is, is that of the nine members, we have one, two, three, four, five members expiring. Their term is expiring on October the 17th. One member's term is expiring November the 7th. I think that as we're looking toward, we know that in conversations that the city clerk and I have had, that there probably are some areas within the charter that there should be some look to see if any updates should be made or any recommendations should be made. So just looking for direction, if the council wants us to move forward with reaching out and reappointing the members that we currently have, or if sending this information and looking for the possibility of new members to serve and we move forward, and then again, we would make a recommendation, I think, probably at some point after the March election to recommend, to potentially reconvene the Charter Review Committee to either get recommendations or things from the council that they may want to look at as it relates to the charter that we've encountered over the last few years since the last update, or maybe just some changes based on staff recommendations.
Council questions, comments? So, I do think we need to do this. Is, Ms. McHugh, is my name still on that list? Because I think the last time the Charter Committee met was when I chaired it.
We were both on it.
Actually, since that time, no, your name is not on that because we did, we do have one vacancy, but your name is not on the list anymore, neither is Deputy Mayor Diaz. We did have, you know, Ms. Aquinet Thomas was, so there were some that were added after, you know, some of you had come off with your election to the council. So, you know, the individuals that we currently have on, again, majority of them expire on the 17th, so we, the 17th of October, one, the 7th of November, we can reach out to those individuals and see if they would like to continue to serve, and then we can bring it back and they can be reappointed, and then we can go from there once, you know, we look to potentially reconvene to start having discussions on the charter and any potential changes to the charter.
Is everybody comfortable? Ms. Diaz?
Thank you. I don't think it's a bad idea ever to review a document. Things change constantly, even just having extra eyes on it, new perspectives, new ways of interpreting things. I think it's a great idea. I believe the gentleman I appoint, I asked to be appointed, Mr. Colton, hasn't even had a chance to have one meeting. There's a few people, I think, because we haven't convened it, so I would definitely be in favor of reaching out, ensuring that they're still interested, but also going ahead with probably pulling together the Charter Review Committee to just, even if it's just to read through and ensure it's up to date.
Understood.
Everybody okay with that? Ms. McHugh, thank you very much. That concludes our agenda. We now go to anybody from the public that would like to speak on non-agenda items. Is there anybody from the public wishing to speak on non-agenda items? Please come forward and make sure you give us your name, please.
Hello, everybody. My name is Nathan Galang from District 2, and I just want to speak on two things. Number one, I want to commend the council for pushing for land acquisition. I quite like that idea. When you look around the city, you just go walk or drive around. There's many plots of land that are currently in the hands of land speculators that would be much better suited in the hands of the city. So I commend that. I think it's a great idea. And number two, I would like to make a recommendation. This is just regarding public safety. So I recently had the pleasure of listening to a presentation from a member of the Guatemalan Maya Center over in Lake Worth, and one fact that they said that really stuck out to me was that 15 people minimum, that's who they could find, had been sent from Lake Worth to Alligator Alcatraz. Some people have debated whether or not this is a local issue. I believe it is, and I'm thankful that there are groups like the Guatemalan Maya Center trying to keep track, trying to keep people informed, because if you can't offer a lot of protections, the minimal protection is knowledge. So, Lake Worth has about 45% of their population being Latino. We have a pretty similar percentage, 44%. We actually have a larger African-American population, many of those individuals also being immigrants. So I wanted to see and request if the city or the staff is able to reach out to some, a group like the Guatemalan Maya Center, and see if they could find if there's been, number one, and see if they could find if there's been, number one, any ICE activity, and number two, any of our residents being put, not necessarily into Alligator Alcatraz, because that was recently shut down, but there's also C-Con in El Salvador, and they're using Guantanamo Bay, among other camps. So my point is, in short, could we use a connection to the Guatemalan Maya Center, who is connected to our immigrant community, and find out if there has been ICE activity in this city? Because as it stands right now, there's not a lot of credible reporting because there's simply not a lot of discussion, not a lot of eyeballs. So in short, I commend the land acquisition. And number two, I recommend that we inform our population for the sake of public safety. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Anybody else from the public wishing to speak? So our next is city manager's report.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Just a couple of reminders. We do have a couple of, of different events coming up here at the end of September. The first is our Senior Resource Fair on the twenty-seventh of September, from eleven AM to two PM at the Community Center. Really great event. We have a lot of great vendors. Staff does a great job of getting a lot of resources to attend that event, so we're excited about that. Next event, we have our Sunday Sounds, September the twenty-eighth. That is going to be a phenomenal event. It is a first-time event for us. We're very excited for that, from two to eight PM at Community Park. And then just a reminder to the mayor and council, as you know, we are in the throes of putting together our Parks Master Plan. You will be contacted at some point here soon by Kim Lee Horn. You'll receive an invitation from them as stakeholders, which will probably then require like a thirty-minute interview with Kim Lee Horn just to provide some perspective as we start to work towards developing a Parks Master Plan for the city. So just wanted to give you the heads up on that. Your assistant, your executive assistant is aware of that and will also be included and can coordinate those. But just wanted to give you that reminder. That is all I have.
All right. Ms. Early, our city attorney.
Nothing to add this evening. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. So with that, that concludes our agenda. Is there a motion to adjourn?
You want to do individual?
Oh, individual comments from the council. Start with Mr. Tharp, as he reminded me.
Just a, a brief, congratulations to Dr. Harris. Great feedback on, on your dine local. I, I think it's a great, great thing you're doing. I, I'm seeing, hearing great things online, hearing great things from friends. I got friends who are coming up specifically now to dine within Green Acres. All the way down from Boca, one of my colleagues, she's from Trinidad. She told about the restaurant, and she was like, I gotta go. So we got two more people coming into the city. So that's just one person I spoke to. So just really kudos to you. Thank you for all your hard work. I, I know it's going to be success, and again, thank you.
Mr. Noble?
Nothing, please, nothing.
Ms. Diaz?
Well, I also had a thank you for Dr. Harris. He, I just wanted to point out, you have been working so hard to engage our businesses, and it's starting to show. I'm getting plenty of phone calls as well. They're very happy about the engagement. I also just want to let everybody know that the band that's been hired for September twenty-eighth is legit. Wear dancing shoes. They are going to have you moving. So hope, hope to see everybody there on September twenty-eighth. And my final question is to our city manager. Is the video going to be available online for us to share?
Yes, it will be available.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. My comment is also with Dr. Harris.
Good thing he showed up tonight.
That's right. If you weren't here tonight, you, this would have been it. When, and it was interesting that, that the latest thing came out on dining in Green Acres, because one of the things that I've been doing over the last several months is talking to different restaurants around about being involved in next year in the hundred-year celebration, to try to get people to be in, but to also try to get our businesses even more active in, in things. So thank you very much. I think this is something that will, will have served the city very, very positively over a long period of time. So thank you. And to everybody, thank you for being here tonight. It looks like the rain has stopped, so I think we can call it, call it an evening. So is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
All in favor, all opposed? We stand adjourned.